It is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting a city council order. We will start with our moment of reflection and then Randy can lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no division, just as for all.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we have for the minutes official meeting 5/8, 5/22, 5/29. We do not have 5/1.
I may have noted that. Thank you very much for that. I've entered a motion that we approve. Those, as Randy just stated, in that order. Motion by Rob, seconded by Jack. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, that motion carries. Recognition of guests, is Shane Jenkins there?
Aye, yes.
All right, from the West Virginia Strawberry Festival.
I just want to start out by thanking you all for having me again tonight. I know the past few times I've been over here, I said, I thought this was the last time you'd see me, and then here I am here. So, I appreciate you having me and letting me. My purpose here today is just to kind of give a little post-event review on the Strawberry Festival. So, just wanted to give a little post-event review, talk a little bit about, we had some major success within our events this year. So, give you a little update on that and then kind of brief you on what we are looking forward to as well. If you haven't seen yet, the board was crazy enough to put me in for another term, so I will be here throughout this whole year. Like I said, I keep telling you, it's my last time. Eventually that time will come. So, thanks to you all for having me again. It is a sincere honor and privilege to be the person standing here once again. I represent over 35 members of our board who worked really hard all year long to make our events happen. Today, I'd like to give you a report of this year's events and reflect on what was, without question, one of the most impactful, dynamic, and heartfelt additions of the West Virginia Strawberry Festival in our long proud history. This year, we didn't just host the festival, we made history. From first note of music to the last memory made over strawberry. Strawberry Lane in Jolene Park, this community came together to create something unforgettable. The 83rd West Virginia Strawberry Festival was not only record-breaking, it rewrote the script. And none of it would have been possible without the steady, enthusiastic, and reliable support of you, the City of Buchanan. Once again, the professionalism of city crews, from public works to public safety, was praised not just by visitors, but by vendors, artists, and even first-time attendees. These comments reaffirm what we've always believed, we exist in the greatest community in West Virginia. This year saw the return of ground show entertainment, the busiest carnival crowds we've seen yet, and multiple unique entertainment options. Crowds packed our community at every performance, soaking up a schedule designed to entertain, spark imaginations, and create memories. The excitement, foot traffic brought to our grounds were beyond what we could have hoped for. Now for some numbers. We saw record-breaking attendance at nearly every single event this year. And, I mean, you can see that with your eyes. It wasn't even just a matter of counting, we had huge crowds at everything. For the second year in a row, we employed targeted post-test boy analytics, and the numbers speak for themselves. Over 50,000 unique visitors joined us just between Thursday and Saturday alone. On Saturday alone, our downtown core, not including 80% of the parade route, this is just the Jolene Park to Main Street area, saw over 25,000 unique individuals. Evening concerts on Main Street brought in a crowd of more than 5,000, where we once again created a safe, immersive, and unforgettable atmosphere featuring a multi-award-winning, multi-numbered day harvest. The average trust will go or spend over 150 minutes at our events, and this is really important because we've always tried to bridge the gap between our parade, specifically the Grand Feature Parade, and our events that happened that evening, specifically our entertainment. And we did that this year. That's what that statistic tells us, is we kept the crowds in town all day Saturday. We became a full destination, bridging the gap that existed between our parades and evening entertainment. Our attendees traveled from 49 of 55 of West Virginia's counties, as well as every single surrounding state, further cementing Buchanan as a regional tourism draw. Ongoing partnership with the World Association of Marching Show Bands brought two international bands, as well as one from North Carolina, who received regional scores qualifying them to compete at an international long-term competition in the future, where we hope that they talk about our events highly. But these aren't just numbers. These are smiles, photos, and incredible memories of Buchanan that families will carry for a lifetime. We heard from a woman who brought her grandchildren for the first time to the Strawberry Festival. We met a couple who traveled from Michigan to relive a tradition from their youth. We saw high school bands from across West Virginia and beyond pour into our streets, beaming with pride. That kind of festival, that's the kind of festival this was. It wasn't just good, it was magnetic. And while I may stand here today as president, I do so representing a board of 35-plus volunteers, each of whom poured their heart and soul into making this week happen. They are planners, organizers, and communicators, and most importantly, doers. And their commitment is the foundation of everything we achieve. I'm proud to report that the festival remains in a healthy overall position, thanks to strong community support, record sponsorships, and careful stewardship. But we know we're only scratching the surface of our potential. But beyond the crowds, concerts, and numbers, what stands out to me the most is growth, in every corner, every category, and every arc. As we turn toward the 84th West Virginia Strawberry Festival, our vision is clear, bigger, better, and better. To get there, we're asking for continued and expanded partnership from our community. We believe that by working together, we can build something that puts even more people, more dollars, more pride, and more memories into our community. Our theme for last, this past year, was "Once Upon a Strawberry", but if there's one thing I know for sure, it's that this is not the end of our fairy tale. This festival is not just a tale of the past, it is the living, breathing, thriving story of this community today. The nostalgic days of what the festival used to be are over. The good old days are right now. And when I look around this room, I don't just see council members and city staff, I see co-authors in the next chapter. Because if there's one guarantee I can make today, it's that the best is yet to come for the West Virginia Strawberry Festival. Thank you for your trust, your belief in our mission, and your unwavering support. To close out, I'd just like to give some updates on what's to come. We just elected our board of directors on Tuesday, so we're very, very early in planning for next year, but some things we have planned right now are, we've spoken a little bit about online raffles in our area, it's kind of booming right now. It seems to be something that we could jump into and make a little bit of money, so look for those. Our royalty bingo typically takes place kind of early fall, so that's coming as well. And then, of course, as the year goes on, I'm sure that we will have more to update you all on. I also want to tell you all that the West Virginia Association of Affairs and Festivals has chosen Buchanan and the West Virginia Strawberry Festival as their host for the June meeting, which will take place this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Public Safety Complex Training Room. So, I invite you all to please stop by there if you're available and just say hello. If you'd like to do that and then get out of there, that's completely fine, because our meetings aren't very interesting, but you're welcome to stay. So, I can meet at 30 arrival. If you'd like to just meet and greet and get out would be perfect. I also want to say good luck and best wishes to the upcoming events that are coming. I know, I didn't want to step on any toes by coming here tonight. I know that we have Create the Cannon, starting their season tomorrow night, and then the Barbecue Bash coming up next week, and we extend our best wishes to them as those happen. And with that, I just invite you all to, any questions you may have for comments.
Thank you. Can you provide us with a copy of that report, too? And I'll make sure, we'll try to get those into the minutes for historical purposes.
I had a comment, Shane, my three children came up, and one of the kids was exceptional, one who was teaching history and now in school, couldn't get off work. But they've been to quite a few festivals over the years, and they said this was absolutely the best one they had ever attended. They were just extremely proud to be from Buchanan. That's awesome. We've heard a lot of great comments like that. We'll hear even more.
One more thing I'd like to mention, just, it's a timely thing. We had the waitboard meeting today, and I'd have each one of our departments take a look at the in-kind services that we provided, the events, you know, when they come to town. Because I think sometimes it's lost on the fact that the monetary sponsorship is usually given from the city, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and these numbers are pretty fascinating. 560 bags of garbage removed from Jolene Park, 200 bags from the carnival area, 500 from the parade routes, for a total of 1,260 bags of garbage, 5.13 tons. So, that's one of those in-kind services, you know, that the City of Buchanan provides for the West Virginia Strawberry Festival. But we're very, very proud of what you all do. Congratulations on a fantastic year.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for that report. Very well done, and, yes, great. Onward, upward, '84 coming up.
It's gonna be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe that's all under-recognized guests. We enter into public comment. I've entered a motion that we open the floor for public comment. Motion by Randy, seconded by Pam. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Like son opposed, motion carries. Okay, Randy, I'll let you go through the list. You've got it in front of you, I'm sure.
Yes, we do have Jody Light here that's going to speak to us on behalf of the Almost Have a Barbecue Bash. Jody?
Good evening.
Hi, Jody.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, I'm telling you. You know, we don't have 83 years, we don't have 35-member board, we don't have the budget they do. But, not to be forgotten, we are excited about the coming week. We do have a lot of things planned. And so, I hope you guys will try to join us for the coming week. Just so you know what you got on your little tables there, that's our program book that just came out today. The one big change in that is the event map is on page 18 and 19, and after, it was already printed, we kind of had some interesting things come up. So, that map is not going to be a good map, because everything got switched and swatched around after the, as we all know, the condition of Jolene, but we have worked that out with the city and different entities, and I think we have a mix for that. But anyway, so, that was the only thing, you know, you try to get everything so accurate, and then that, you know, you can't handle all that. But anyway, trying to give a little recap in the handout there, also, as far as where we're at with things. And I'm not going to go through all that, because people don't want to know everything, but just a few little odds and ends. We are up to 32 master teams. We just got in a team today from Massachusetts. So, we know we have 12 states represented. It's kind of interesting. We have the surrounding states, but this is the first time we've had a New Hampshire, a Connecticut, and a Massachusetts-New England state team coming in. And then they go down as far as Tennessee, and kind of everything in between on the East Coast. The nice part about it is, I actually have some teams call and say, "Boy, you've got a tough competition coming up." Because we do have the 2024 team that won the Kansas City Barbecue Society Team of the Year in the world, and they also won the Jack Daniels Invitational in the world, and then we actually have the 2023 team that did the same thing. So, that's pretty exciting to have those both coming to our little bin in Buchanan. We have 14 food vendors, two new ones, but there's all kinds of things, and as you can see there, you have lots of, lots of good smoked brisket and ribs and all kinds of things, but, you know, a lot of folks want to have something else. So, we have Filipino food this year, we have a lot of different things, and of course, no festival's complete without Zool, you know, how that goes. That's a biggie for us. We are pleased, we also have several new sponsors this year, folks that have never gotten involved with barbecues, that tickles us a lot. Hopefully, that means that we're doing a good job, and they want to get involved and help the community as well. Our motto, as you see in there, and we have been saying that a lot lately, you know, times are tough, the economy's tough, and people's dollars aren't stretching as far as they used to. So, we are real excited that you don't need a lot of money, not much at all, to have a lot of fun at this year's Barbecue Bash. If you look at that list of free things, we're really proud. I mean, it costs us a lot of money, but there is a cost, basically. There's no admission, there's no parking, and if you look, there's a whole list of free things. We have free hourly door prizes. Our mission is to get people into town and keep them here. So, if they get a ticket, they can't use it on Saturday before, you know, they got it on Thursday, so they've got to come. And then, hopefully, we're not going to tell them what prizes are going to be given out at what time, so hopefully that'll encourage them to say, "We have some really good stuff." We have golfing, we have food, we have, we have gift certificates of all kinds of things, including at the Mayor's Jewelry Store. We have window tentings, we have, for instance, a dozen donuts every week for six months, we have gift baskets, we have luggage, we have passes to the trampoline park in Clarksville for the kids, we have this, I don't know what EV tickets or cars are. They say that kids are, y'all probably know what those are, EV cars, I guess they play.
EV, that's electronic vehicle, that's one of those like Elon Musk sells, that's what you're saying.
Not EV, they told me that.
You said EV.
Maybe we're going to give away a car. But we've got bowling passes and all kinds of things like that. So, I mean, we even have a 300-some dollar, actually, Three Smokers. The two of them are about $300, Weber Smoky Mountains, and we have a grill that was, one of the Blackstone grills that's being given by Lowe's. A lot of gift cards and things. So, the whole idea is come down, doesn't cost you anything. If you come there, you come to our tent, you get a ticket, we stamp your hand, it's free. We have a drawing every hour for kids and a drawing every hour for adults. So, we hope that'll get them into town and keep them here for more than maybe grabbing some barbecue and leaving. And then, if you, the other free things there, we just added a couple reasons. Actually, the chambers did this last year and kind of inspired us, they put some cute little blow-up pigs in their window. So, we decided what better way to welcome people is to have a window decorating contest. So, Janet, and that is Janet McCorkle, she's a member of our board as well, hand-delivered the letters that I also gave you a copy of, that went to all the businesses. So, they know what's coming. The streets are closed, and Main Street is not closed at all, and I think everyone's happy about that. Because we heard, you know, the businesses in the city was kind of like, "Can we not close Main Street?" So, we're not. But we're having cash prizes, $200 for first place, $100 for second place, $50 for third place, so it's worth their effort. And I'm seeing things go up at the Dairy Queen, and some really cute pigs coming to life out there, and there's several more coming. One of the other things we think will be fun is we have from Florida coming in a butterfly exhibit and a ladybug exhibit. It's a big, huge inflatable ladybug, and they'll actually release some. The butterflies, they have several species, and you can feed them, get your pictures taken with them, and just have fun. We are excited. We've tried for two or three years to get the West Virginia Mobile Aquarium back, sponsored by DEP and the DNR. They will be coming in Thursday, and JB has worked with us, and the fire department will fill that 2,000-gallon aquarium. And it's really neat. If you haven't seen it, it's an educational thing, but they have all these fish that are native to West Virginia. And I'll be honest, there's things I've seen in that aquarium that I'd never go swimming anywhere in West Virginia after seeing these crazy things. But I think it'll be a good thing, the kids really enjoy it as well. Dinosaur shows, last time we could only get them, two or three years ago, on Friday. So, we have Friday and Saturday, three shows a day, free. We just inflated our 10-foot customized, has our logo on his belly, inflatable pig. He'll be down there, so people might want to do a little photo op. The thing we haven't told you about yet, but we're going to tell you now, it kind of started squeaking out here a little bit. Oh, we have a cake decorating contest for the kids from five and up. And we actually have some kids from Ohio that have actually, Jerry Henderson is heading that up. And we have actually, I was surprised, kids coming in from Ohio to do a cake decorating contest in three different age divisions. So, we got some nice prizes for them, and a couple things that she's still working on that will be really nice for the older kids. The big thing that we think we hope will be a good draw is, we have commissioned, those of you who've ever watched Food Network, and you've heard of the Ace of Cakes, Chef Duff Goldman, who's still on syndication on some things. We contracted them several months ago, and they're creating a 10-foot tall, 10 years, 10-foot tall cake. And we actually had a 3D company create the top. Actually, it'll look like this, I mean, it's five tiers. This guy's 3D-created on top of our logo. He's about 2 and 1/2 feet tall, he's 45 inches wide, he will be the cake topper. Now, will this be an edible cake? No, because we were afraid about the weather. But everything on the outside is edible. They have a base, but it is, and I made a measure, I have a picture I'll be posting soon, of the poor girl up on an eight-foot ladder, and she's reaching as hard as she can at the top to put the pig on top. So, we'll start getting some information out on that. But, you know, if you have a cake, you feel like you got to eat that. So, we will have a three-tier real cake from Charm City Cakes out of Baltimore. And we hope, Mr. Mayor, hopefully you will be there at 2:00 on Saturday, if you're in town, to help us ceremoniously cut the cake. We might give you a bite, too. And we have some other VIP.
I'm not sure if I don't get a bite.
Well, okay, all right. You're not coming, we'll work on that, and some barbecue. But we decided, you know, we have to take care of the folks, so we are going to give out tickets that morning, and Charm City Cake is making, and you, I think, maybe have seen this, with the chamber dinner, the nice sugar cookies with our logo on it and the sprinkles. So, we're giving out 1,000 of those cookies. Again, everything is free. So, if a family doesn't have a lot of money, they don't have to to come here and have a good time. It's a good weekend, everything is free, unless they want to buy crafts, they want to buy food, it's free. And we've done a lot of work and spent a lot of money to get these things in, to hopefully, you know, just bring the families to town and have them have a good time. We have gospel, bluegrass bands, country band, classic rock band, the U. D. Community Band on the stages on different nights. So, we're excited, a lot of little details to finish. I hope you gentlemen will come to the VIP reception. That is for, and ladies, sorry, and lady. That is Friday evening, next Friday evening, about 5:00, and our barbecue teams will go there. That's one of the reasons they're crossing that street, but they will be there. I think Pam was there last year, weren't you? Pretty good fit. Yes, Jack was, too, yeah. So, 5:00, unless we're running a little bit off, Claudia will be from Mama Roma's will be doing our meal for us. So, we encourage you to come, and with your sponsorship, you know, there's another meal ticket there, so you all have, and Robbie has the rest up on his desk there, to go to Off the Bone, which everyone's familiar with. They're from Columbus, they've been here since we started. Actually, they were one of the first food vendors. So, you'll have a free complimentary meal to go there, that's just kind of part of your sponsorship. So, we're excited, a lot of last-minute plans to do, and we hope you'll, at some point, I'll see you down there running around, or you'll see me looking a little frazzled, but we're excited, and hopefully, everything, the rain will hold on. We're watching that every day, just like Strawberry and anybody else does when you have an event, and you just never know, so, we'll wear a ponte if we have to, that's okay. We got it. You have any questions or anything I can answer?
Jackson, do you abstain from that meal? Abstain from something? Oh, I'm sorry.
He's trying to take your meal. Oh, sure. That's just a complimentary meal for you as part of your sponsorship. So, yeah, oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, and Petey is our guy with Off the Bone, so he always works with us to take care of the tickets. And we give that to our volunteers as well, so when they go down to work, we want to take care of them, so. Oh, absolutely. Anything? You guys are going to be too easy tonight?
I'm prepared.
Jody, I appreciate the, obviously, there's a lot of hands involved, it seems like.
It's only a nine-member board to get a lot of work done.
A lot of effort, and just appreciate your thoughtfulness towards the plan.
We enjoy it, we enjoy it. And just like Shane said, I follow up with that. You know, the best thing for all of us, you know, sometimes you go, "Are we going to do this again? We're getting old." Then you go down, you see the people, and they're smiling, the kids are laughing, and they're, you know, they're doing pictures, and you see the Facebook comments, and you figure, you know, if you gave people a couple days of pure fun and enjoyment, in our case, it's free, what else can you ask for?
Very special.
Yeah. I mean, that's the way we feel about it.
No, I'm not judging.
No, he's not judging this year, he's out of there. Anything? Scott, this is your first year, so.
Well, I actually competed years and years ago.
I remember that, you're sure of it.
I came in last, in my opinion.
I don't remember that.
When did you compete with Scott?
Ribs.
Ribs, yeah.
We did a rib cook-off over there in the park, in the lot of Jim Hinkle's, and it was strictly ribs.
I am very, very excited for this year. I think vast amount of activities, that people are going to open this and say, "Well, there's no way we're going to miss this."
We had calls from a lot of different states saying, "It's really, you know, give us the dates from North Carolina, New Jersey." It was kind of surprising that they've seen the information and want to make sure they have the dates right. So, I thank you again for your support, both financially, both with the staff, and we're working hard to get some corrections made from, you know, so we get those food vendors, they'll be in actually behind the stage area versus in Jolene to take care of that property. Jack's looking me funny, you know, the mud down there. So, we've done a last-minute flip-flop, and our food vendors will not be in Jolene Park where we have had on Strawberry because of the mud situation.
Jody, do you have the queen from Texas coming in?
Oh, will you? No queen Becky won't be here, so. But, yeah, we're moving in, it'll just be a flip, and Rob and I talked about that, because he's a food vendor, knows those things very well. And we work very well with Ethan and them to make sure that, that's the big bugaboo, is getting the power, the size, the water access. So, we hope we've got that all. It'll maybe take a little delay in getting them set up, but they'll be all on pavement, so even if it rains, it might get their little feet a little bit wet, but they're not going to be in mud, and they're not going to tear at Jolene. So, we think, we hope that that will be something, a good thing for the future. Anything else? All right. Thank you much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the only, Jody was the only one to sign up and speak, so.
Okay, good enough. Well, I've entered a motion that we close the public comment section. That, Dave Thomas and Jack?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Let's go down to the financial report. Ambi?
Good evening. Okay, I'm going to give you a report for the balances for May. In general fund money market, there was $1,362,000, the CD remains at $86,000. Historic landmark savings was at $3,037,000, poll tax was at $70,000, municipal stabilization fund at $969,000, blood control account was at $78,000, consolidated public works board was $47,000, and cemetery CDs at $235,000, sales taxes at $1,956,000, American Rescue account is at $101,000, opioid accounts $151,000, and then for general fund and money, for general fund revenues and expenditures, revenues were $326,000 for the month of May, expenditures was $721,000. So, we had quite a few expenditures there in May, and I'll kind of point out some of them, because you have several when you're in your packet to be reviewed, but one's pulling out. The test and associates survey for the Wesley and Copley Squaw is $4,900. They almost have a barbecue day, sponsor tips $10,000. Larry Gregory for the first deposit on the fireworks, $5,000. The Sign Guy, $2,400 for Main Street banners for the Strawberry Festival. $2,500 to Valley Steel Service for training props at the training facility. $5,000 to MES Service Company Gloves and Rescue Tools Service Hall. $3,900 to JF Allen for blacktopper patching, but then $214,000 to JF Allen for paving of streets at South Canal Street, Rupert Avenue, Ritchie, Upper Drive, Lower Drive, Rustic Drive. Then we had $2,500 Ribside Supply Traffic Kings. $5,100 for Central Supply, 43 bin blocks for road closures, those were used for the parade routes. $8,000 for Silco Concepts for curb painting. $1,700 to Rotary Brush for Butter Brim for the street sweeper. $4,400 RDR Energy Concrete for Island Avenue Project. $2,000 to Apalachicula Equipment Solutions for excavator rental. $8,500 Benjamin Airsmen for four weeks of owned city lots. $5,100 for Rec Desk, that's a software that we use for the Stalker and Colonial Theater. $2,900 to Strategic IT, CAC Website Development, that's Colonial Website Development. And then $11,000 to Road Cell Enterprises Building the burn room at the training facility. We had several things in May, and then we're working on June and getting ready to close out our books for June. IT has been really busy, so strategy, technology, strategy, technology, IT is our vendor for IT services, and they've been very busy this last month since they've been assigned to it. They will come back and report to council, but they're busy doing the assessments of all of our areas of communications for our computer system, and they'll be back here personally to do a report for you. One thing I, we worked really hard on, but didn't make it to the agenda, so I want to, because you'll have to have a special meeting for this. We were, we have a final budget revision that's due for general fund. We have to have it into the state by the 13th. So, we worked really hard on, talked about it, but it didn't make it to the agenda, and we just realized that today. So, I can go over those things with you now, or we can wait until we can have that special meeting. It's up to you. We'll have to have it next week. It can be by phone if you can attend.
You had to send it to the packet, right?
It should be in your packet.
It's in the packet, so we can review it.
Yes. And I'll send you out this one, too.
Mayor, do you want to go over tonight, or?
Yeah, we can go over it tonight if she wants, since it's in the packet and we're all together.
So, this would be revision number four of the general fund for the year ending June 30, 2025. The total budget revision is $296,000. Mayor thought, "Oh, because it was something I needed to fix," from the one I sent you. And you're going to see your Excel sheet. I always try to do an Excel sheet of line-by-line items that we're addressing. So, in revenues, we had to add $91,000. So in revenues, we had to add 91,000 for the FEMA generator grant. So that was money that we hadn't originally budgeted for, but that we ended up doing some expenditures and doing a draw on. So that's on the revenue side and it's also down in expenditure side. So that grant washes itself out. We also had revenues coming in more than we expected for contractors B&amp;O. Added another 150, 150,000 for revenues because of the contractors B&amp;O that we received. There was quite a lot of work done out towards the armory and that upturning amount for contractors. miscellaneous revenue was another one that we had, more revenues than we expected. We received a check from Southern Groups. Just out of the blue, we had to try to figure out what it was for. It was from our very old insurance company that we have not been with since '20, 1920. I didn't really understand it. It was some kind of a refund for drugs that they, I guess, they allocated differently that we had to pay for because we were self-insured at the same time. So we got $19,000 from that. It was called a liquor settlement. Then we, no, the liquor settlement was another one, 15,000 that we got. And then we also had fiber right-of-way install fees for about 36,000 that we received. So that upped the revenues, all those items. Then down in expenses, about 19 of those line item numbers have to do with personnel from where there was pay increases given. So benefits and payroll, we went through each line item to see where they would fall short before the end of 30. Those were pay increases approved by council. So 19 of those line items are personnel. We also had some things that we could move money out of. So we had professional services that we took 20,000 out of because we didn't expend it as much as we expected. That was surveys for the property swap for Wesleyan was at 5,000 there. So it wasn't as much as we anticipated. We had to up Mayor's office supplies, so we had more expenses there. Some of those were ads for the HR and IT, HR and IT ads and then banners that were purchased. The other things, I will jump down here to audit. Audit, we had to add 2,700 to, because our auditors that are actually going to do the audit for the year ending, just June 30, 25, are already starting. So they got their first installment. They're already working on some of the books that we have. They're going to be here at the end of the month to pick up some other items. So they've started and got their, we filled for their first installment of that 6/30/25 audit. We cleaned up a couple of things. Housing enforcement line item and zoning salaries. We needed $860 out of one line and moved it to another. So it's really just moving money around to clean up those two GL account numbers. In the election, we had budgeted $9,500 because we had the library and the levy. The county does that for us, so they generally charge us for their services. And they said they weren't going to charge us. So I took that back out and want to thank them for that. But they said there's no charge. Data processing, again, we had some costs that we normally didn't have, some antivirus software, IT services that, in addition to some of the things we already had. So we had to add 11,000 for that one. In two line items that we could reduce just a little was police salaries and fire salaries, but they're pretty healthy in those line items. So I did reduce them just a little. Police materials and auto, though, needed some funds. So it's kind of moving from one to another. They needed some funds in materials and supplies and in auto. And new equipment, we moved some money out of there that they didn't expect to spend before the end of this year. On your second page, we did have to add some money to regional gel fees because a few more citations are being added. So we had to budget for the expenses, even the those that collected off of the person with the citation. We have to do an expense out of there for those fees. Down under street, the city property mowing, we wanted to start identifying that separately. So we have created a line item for city property mowing of city lots. And so 17,500 is in there. So classifying the mowing separately. We are, we'd like to put a contribution of 100,000 to Consolidated Public Works. They have quite a few ideas and plans for the parks. And the, really, the only revenue we get from consolidated is if you get parking tickets and then cemetery burials and sell lots. So they need some funds in there. So 100,000 for that. I know they want you to do several upgrades to the parks that we've already done. They want to add more, including a pavilion. Let's see. We did some more signs and signal materials. We need 18,000 in there for several things related to signs and signals. We took out 9,000 from snow removal. Obviously, we hope it doesn't snow this month. So we took that 9,000 that was in there and reallocated that. Stormwater, the general fund usually contributes to that. And they did contribute 100,000. But in the sanitary board, they've identified several things that they need to address with stormwater. So 100,000 there. You are getting some extra revenues in, you need to use it for the staffs and that, those things. So 100,000 is what suggested. Then I just picked some salaries. We have people near salaries and we have stalker salaries. So we just moved 40,000 from one to another line item. Nothing really, nothing that changes the bottom line of the budget. The other thing that doesn't change really the bottom line of the budget is stalker donation refunds. Some people have asked for refunds on their donations for the capital campaign. So we moved that out of the stalker building up to stalker donation refunds. Because we're going to have to address that again in the new budget where we have still some savings in there that we need to move into general fund to expense however the people donating want it to be expensed. If they want refunded or if they want to go to some programming for things within the stalker activities. Then there was a few programs, karate, zumba, yoga. They are getting more activities, so I had to up those a little bit. But then again, we do get funds in for paying for those classes. But they were having, they have more people participating, so there was more expense. And we added some funds to the concrete center supplies. 5,000, that was for alcohol purchases. Again, our revenues are doing much better in there from the sales. Randy's doing a good job of that. And we had to put some money in there for that. Public safety complex, 3,000 for electrical grounding. Generally, we don't have to do that. And then, of course, like I talked to you later earlier about the FEMA generator grant expenses are covered by those revenues. So 296,100 is what that budget revision will be once we get through the approval process with that in the special meeting. Any questions about that? It's a big one. I'm sorry. It was a lot of line items, a lot of numbers.
Well, this is pretty typical. We have our cleanup, if you will, budget revision before we enter into the next fiscal year. And then once we hit July, we'll have to do a similar exercise again to refine our budget that we set forth back in February. Does, do council members have any comments or questions regarding the information that Ambi has presented? Okay. So what if we set a very, 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 very small singular line item agenda next Thursday, the 12th, following our water board meeting? And it can be a call-in. And then we can just officially take action to adopt this budget revision. And that will meet us before the Friday, the 13th deadline.
I move we do that. I'll second it.
Well, that also is not on the agenda. We just need kind of a head nod to set that meeting.
Sounds good.
Just an announcement. You're calling a special meeting, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. On the 13th, that we'll do, we'll say 9 o'clock. That should give us enough time after water board and we can just do a quick call-in. So if you have no questions or comments now, it sounds like it should be a very quick just simple approval on a week from today.
So the 12th, not 13th, 30th, the 12th?
12th, 13th. Yeah.
I greatly appreciate that.
Sure.
We'll have a quorum because of the water board meeting anyway.
Close to it, yeah.
Will you agree?
So we have two, don't go away. You got two items that are here, but one of you want to talk about probably Civic Plus.
Oh, yeah, I can talk about that.
Watch, watch.
Let's first take first things first. The bills that Ambi mentioned in her report, is there a motion to approve those bills as presented?
So move. I'll second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, motion carries. And Ambi, if you want to talk about Petey.
Okay. So this process was started several months ago. On and off, we've been kind of visiting this topic. Some council members expressed interest in having some agenda software where it'd be easier for you to navigate. All of those papers that you're looking at right now, trying to find sometimes what I'm talking about or what someone else is talking about. So it's not quite so cumbersome. So I reached out to several municipalities to see what they were using. And most don't. They're smaller, so they don't use that sort of software. But the ones that did answer back were using Civic Plus or a version of Civic Plus. And then Board Box was another one we kept cropping up on. So we did a demo. Randy was in it and the youth office staff that generally deal with agendas from Civic Plus. And so they did an agenda. This company's been in business about 25 years and offers multiple software tools, including web design permitting, asset management, codification, and there's a few others. This particular meeting software is a cloud-based service. It can be accessed by a user anywhere that has internet service. Users would have to have login credentials to log in. But basically, the agenda meeting software allows for us to upload documents and organize them in the agenda whereby when you're looking at that software, you can click the agenda item and that PDF will show up. Like when I'm talking about a budget revision, it'll say budget revision. You click it and there it is. You don't have to keep finding and looking for it. Other features, it's got, they do offer unlimited users, unlimited storage. They configure up to 10 boards, 10 meeting types. They have access to library of agendas, meetings and staff reports. You can use templates of those things as well. They've got some other options that are some additional charges too, if you want to go that far into it. And that, one of those was streaming video of meetings. If, you know, your public can also get login credentials and log in and look at the agendas too, just like you are. They allow you to make notes while you're at your computer. The cost of this is, the initial setup and training is $10,200. The annual service fee for it is $4,800. Implementation, if you would want, if you want to approve this, is 14 to 16 weeks. So they would come in and actually train staff, teach us how to use the software, how to navigate it. It's got a lot of features to it. Randy, we try and remember some of those and I can't. We would also have to buy laptops for the counter chambers. So that would be an additional cost that we'd have to just find the best price for. But either laptops or iPads. So councils labor, whether they want to navigate some type of software like that. I know Jack was interested in it. That's my report. I mean, it does have a lot of features.
I just, a question right now with, so our streaming capability is through a cable network? That's just channel three? And does that have access to internet capabilities or?
Yes. I mean, this streaming would be like, probably like YouTube. You would go there and say, I want to watch this movie.
Are folks able to do that right now, like just to go on a channel three website?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, it can. Are you live tonight?
No, sir. No, man.
So they would have live streaming if we elect to do that. That's an additional charge.
Any program we produce, including city council, will go on YouTube as soon as Rodney puts it on YouTube.
And we can coordinate with Rodney on how best we want to do this. It can also give us an opportunity for some of our enterprise board meetings to open up. Now, you can watch the meeting on, go to the meeting currently, but just take it to another level if we decide to go, if we decide to go that way.
Yeah. Because that's an additional longer to it.
That's not in this initial packet. That would be an option down the road if we felt we needed. Your fellow was worried.
It's 10K initial, 5K annually. And we need like seven to 10 iPads on top of that.
I'd rather have a laptop.
Or laptops.
For laptops. He better than me.
Yeah. I would highly recommend doing this from the presentations I saw and were a part of. It will just make things much more efficient, very much user-friendly. And one thing that I'm interested in is the fact that it kind of pre-builds some of the minutes. If you, as a recorder, if I'm following along, you know, I can kind of.
You can migrate that into.
Migrate, yeah. Migrate everything into the minutes much easier than the handwritten notes and going back to the videos and comparing, you know, the different comments and so on and so forth. So it actually has a feature in there that's part of that package that helps blend things over into the minutes themselves.
Well, just with council too, I mean, this is three pages, 400 pieces of paper here just for.
Oh, it's a lot of paper printed. And in our other board meetings, a lot of times, I'll see stacks of them laying there that just get, they're printed, they're put on the tables. We don't get that many people come to the meeting. We pick them up after the meeting for them in a recycle bin. So there's a lot of waste there.
I think efficiency too. I mean, for Teresa, for, you know, all the supervisors and the chiefs.
And the reporter moving forward, whether it's me or whoever's city reporter is going to be very efficient.
One thing I also noticed, they had a historical archiving. I didn't ask him about that because, but one thing I thought about, if this is possible, I think it is, some of the old minutes that we have, we only have them here. We scanned some in on a DVD. But I would think people would love to look at some of those handwritten minutes. And there'd be another storage place on this cloud in case something would damage the documents here, that they would be forever lost. So I did think of that too.
Have all those been scanned or?
We've scanned them. They were, you know, like help that we had over the summer. So we have most unscanned, not all. We have most unscanned. But there's some history in that. You kind of need to lose that if something. That's just a minor thing, but I did see that.
Well, I think that this is something that's been needed for quite some time. And I think we should move forward with it. And I agree with council that, starting off with, let's hold off on the streaming element and some of the bells and whistles for later on if we should choose that we need it. But let's get started with this so that we can start to better streamline our processes for the seven of us at the table for sure.
Well, I'll make sure to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Randy, second by Jack. And this is on line item number seven, Petey, approval, acceptance of the quote from Civic Plus for agenda and meeting management. Is there, as we've got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, that motion carries. All right. Ambi, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ambi.
Ambi and I, Ambi and I had ourselves a day today going back and forth talking about the budget. So, all right. Public Works Report, Ethan.
Steve Department spent a lot of the time, some months in between meetings preparing and planning out and setting up for Strawberry Festival. Guys did a good job, we had lots of extra time and some late nights with it, but think of everything back together. We've been working on swapping out some little signposts and stop signs and street decals and things of that nature. And we're going, we decided we had some excess money left over from the paper contract for the last round. We're going to have the contractor go ahead and pave the same streets we were going to pave, have the contractor do it for, spend the month of, before more streets done with that. And then we've been continuing on Island Avenue sidewalk, and we've had several residents request a sidewalk participation program on O'Connor Street. So we're going to get about 150, 200 feet of sidewalk replays through that program. Parks, the pit wall ports are scheduled to be resealed next week, we've got them squared off, this is from wherever we resurfaced them and expanded the playing area. And after that, that's the last item that we have planned at the park, so hopefully within a week, weather pending, we'll have that wrapped up. And we've been working on placing some more around Stalkers Park and the city parks. Andrew's been doing a good job keeping up with that and making sure we're up to spec. Waste Department doesn't have anything new, sewer continuing to work on our Island Avenue upgrade, that pump station, hoping to finish up the CMH development in a week or so. And making several small taps and maintenance items to the plant and collection system. And we have a plane inspection scheduled with the DEP next week. Water Department finished up CMH, they have a swap over from a previously undersized lawn to do, and then that'll be all they have there. They got rid, demolished the old generator station in front of Tractor Supply, that was part of the ARPA projects. And they installed the emergency generator fence around the airport booster station. Zoning code enforcement, the Board of Appeals, then on May 28th, they approved 152 Randolph Street, which was construction with a year rear yard setback. 133 Oklahoma, which was a side yard setback requirement, and then they are awaiting a survey for 188 Oklahoma. And they're continuing to deal with high grass complaints and investigating utility bill adjustments for swimming pools that's been filled up this spring. That'd be for the sewer bill, doesn't give them the sewers to get that adjusted. Engineering's been working on the final payment for Contract A, that'll finish up the water and sanitaries, ARPA-related sewer projects. And we have a little bit left over funds to put towards the water treatment plant project. The WDOH tap program, continuing to work on the revised plans towards Route 20, towards Lowe's. Working on the Water Department Asset Management Program, and we have a bid up, I mean, for appraisal services on June 11th at 1A and for some property free, regarding the new water plant. So that is all I have in the report, I believe.
Ethan, I should have cut this when you sent this over to me earlier, but the situation on 188 Oklahoma Street, that was dismissed from the Zoning Board of Appeals because they have no authority.
Okay.
Over that situation, so that will not be coming back on one of the agenda, the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
So we'll make up again though with Alice too. But yeah, that was, that was just a, it's something the Board of Appeals could not, could not address, yeah. So just that, one clarification.
All right. Any questions or comments for Ethan?
The signs on Camden Avenue, you can't miss them, stop signs.
I'm glad you brought that up, Jack, because I do think we have to have a discussion about the trees in the center area. Mayor, you're going to have to weigh in on this. The signs on the center sections coming each way are still blocked by the trees, and I know we're very protective of our trees. But that, I drove it both ways with purpose, and both those, both directions definitely need trimmed back. For us to have the sign there but then blocked is a problem, I feel.
Well, the trees are going to be replaced here fairly soon. We have a grant that has, that we've been awarded to replace the trees on Camden Avenue. And Ethan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we should be able to determine the spacing and the placement of the replacement trees, correct?
Yeah, so for that grant, we can determine where they go, we just have to claim a certain amount of them. Spacing and everything is up to us, yes.
Okay, so we can, we can better, you know, space them and plant them around the intersections than maybe we do right now. And they've got, they were replaced, I was, I was in high school, I think, when they were replaced, so that's, that's over, that's 20 years plus ago, that they were, that they were replaced.
Well, I'd like us to address, and of course, you can take a look when you get back, when you're able to, but I'd like us to address those trees as quickly as possible. We've made a great effort on the heels of a horrific tragedy in that intersection, but if we could take a look at that sooner than later. Perhaps if we trim the tree back and remove that tree, waiting to replace it with something else, I just think that's imperative to move quickly on.
Well, if it's a hazard, we should do it immediately.
Well, and you can still see the stop sign, it's not, or one of the stop signs.
One of them.
Yeah, so it's like any other intersection, you can see one, there's just the added one.
I just, I'm concerned over having a stop sign that we installed is wrong. Even though there's another one on the right-hand side that's visible.
I just didn't want to be confusing, you can see any stop sign, you can still see one, yes.
Any other questions or comments for Ethan?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Up next is the Fire Department Report, Chief Kimble.
Hi, Mayor, how are you? I should be, man, council's looking good, I think Dave's up to game tonight.
We're going to have to record.
In relation to the Camden Avenue area, Marion Street, also take into consideration eventually the Tenerife Bridge is going to be tore down. So all the traffic that crossed in is going to be coming up Marion Street. So if you remember when we had the three lanes of McDonald's being installed, our car rec call volume like quadrupled because everybody was going down Camden Avenue and Marion Street. So keep that in relation, so everybody coming off Tombsville Road will come out the Golf Course Road and probably come up Marion Street at that point in time. So that's, that's a horrendous amount of traffic increase for that road. So as soon as we can get something in place to make it more reasonably safe there for people to see up and down the street, it would be great, so. Moving into my thing here, Strawberry Festival, made it to another one. You know, it's, all the planning we've done, current back end, when we did Wamsby, we'd always talked about Wamsby, Strawberry was very, our biggest events. So if we could get everybody on board, we could plan of that, the planned works, the placement of EMS, the placement of fire trucks, the placement of our EMTs that we provide, and mutual aid that we call in, it's very, very well in place now. So we got WVU involved with doctors, so we don't overload our hospital system if something does go down. So times are different, as you know, we've had parades across the country, the cars have hurt people in and people do stupid stuff. So we do not want that to happen to us because, what a great presentation by Shane Jenkins, you know, the Strawberry Festival's on top of their game. They're bringing people into our community, we want to make sure they're safe, so. That being said, in relation to what the Fire Department committed to the Strawberry Festival, as far as administrative time, I put in an additional 24 hours that week. That, of course, I'm salaried, so there's no additional cost for that. But the career staff put 124 hours of overtime in for those three days, those three parades. And the volunteers committed 99 hours of volunteer hours for that same time period. So that tells you what we've contributed to the event and to making sure we're safe, the people that attend are safe. Call volume is about normal for the parade, there was some different types of calls, and I'm sure Chief Parade will relate to those better than I can after our time events. So, but it's, there's a lot of new types of incidents going on, sometimes with different aspects of more law enforcement than it is firing EMS, so. Training, so we're ready, the first floor of our live burn facility out there is almost complete. We're getting ready to put the staircase to the second floor, we're moving on. We're hoping to be done with the three-story building by the end of the year. So we're, we got corey screws out there doing the welding, we go out and help, we help them install doors and windows. The burn trailer that we got from Loudoun County, Virginia, we are set up and ready to roll with it. So we put an invite out to a local volunteer fire department for eight members, we can do eight at a time, we got two committed. So we're going to reach out to another fire department until we get to eight people. So we want to put them through just some basic fire familiarization and then go into some thermal imaging aspects of firefighting. So if we can get eight people to attend, if not, we'll, we'll reach out to Elkins and Weston, another place where we know we'll get people to come to. I've had, we had two companies come in to look at Engine One, which is our 2009 Suppen, the redo that we're looking at. We had a spec sheet of what we feel needs looked at or reviewed to make sure it's up to snuff. So they're going to go back and get back to us on the cost to do that, there is a timeline. So once they get the engine, it'll probably take, you know, nine to 12 months to redo that engine, so. But you're looking at, you know, if you was to buy an Engine 11 today, it's 1.2 million dollars. And if we can redo an 09 to get another 10 to 12 years out of it for 400,000, that's, that's the investment, so. Did have a very good meeting with the college administration, the president and a couple administrators, the head of maintenance, and the head of security, and myself, and a couple of the captains met. Went over some stuff that we just, with incidents, the college stuff we see and we kind of concerned about, just some basic incident command system. How we typically, when we go to a bigger commercial event that we have, how those commercial companies react. They have a liaison that meets us, you know, because we don't know all their HVAC or their heating systems and stuff. So those people become a liaison, liaison, and that's the stuff we're asking from the college, because when we go to a fire over there, if you've got a maintenance person on duty, we want them to come because they know more about the building than us. We talked about, you know, our medical incidents that we respond over there, because we do respond on several with the college, so, you know, not to scare people that there's a fire at the college. But they do, we respond to several fire alarms and several with fire sprinkler activation. So we were talking about keys to the rooms that have the sprinkler shut offs, because when we had the actual fire in the campus center, we could not access that room. We were getting ready to tear the door down when the maintenance guy arrived with the keys, so. So to get us keys, they are putting Knox boxes up, which will assist us immensely. There's 10 fire hydrants on the campus that the college owns, they hadn't been tested in years. I asked them to be tested, they had them done, all 10 of them, and surprisingly, they flowed, good flow, so we're excited about that. Just some predetermined, as they go through and they redo their buildings and parking lots, we just would like some emergency vehicle access. There's some buildings down there, when school's in session, you couldn't get a fire truck near the place, so there's some concerns with that. The Old English Anx, which is the oldest building on campus, it doesn't even have a road to, so. So there's a lot of concerns with that. Security and maintenance key access, we went over, actually had a elevator class, had a gentleman from Jersey come in who specializes in people that get trapped in elevators. How do you access and how do you get them out and stuff? So we used the college and several of their elevators and realized that some of the keys are not the keys we need, because there's a key to open the doors up and stuff. So we're working with them to make sure there's proper keys on site. And they're going to allow us, actually, Agnes Hired Hall, the oldest dorm on campus, is going offline next year, they're going to be remodeling it. So as they're remodeling and throughout this winter, we're going to have full access to training in, which is huge for us. How often do you get the training in a five and a half story building and nobody there to bug you, you know, so that we can get our hose lays and stuff, stuff like that. So it was a really good, positive meeting with the college. I'm glad that the administration everywhere is very progressive, we talked about CDMs classes, to, it really links us together. They understand first responder lingo, you know, and they, so when you have a command center, they understand what's going on, they can help you out, so. Stuff like that. On down, we did have a stakeholder meeting, like we had had before the moratorium on the first due. So Mr. Adam Burkhammer, we're not this, we had it down here, we had city council from Weston, we had city attorney, the city manager from Weston, county commission from Lotus County, the mayor was there with Joey and I. We had fire association representatives from both Lewis and Uptown County. Phil Hamilton was there, Robbie Morse was there, and Adam Burkhammer was there. And we had a real broad discussion on, you know, there's a lot of concerns and questions on the viability of volunteer fire service in Weston. It's not just here, it's everywhere. And the dying of members of the volunteer fire service and the recruitment is just not there. And what are we looking at down in the future, talking about first due fire fees and municipalities or county run, like a, say, like a metro fire department, where it's ran by one entity but it has several sub-stations type, they're doing that in Burton County right now, and it's working well for them, but it's supported by the county commission, so. And Jefferson County is in the process of doing that also. So just stuff like that, we're going to continue to have these stakeholder meetings and probably try to queue that down to some major things that we can maybe look at legislation to help or try to fix things. It's good just to get in the room and discuss things, so. That being said, moving right into the first due, that new legislation goes into effect July 8th. I think it's time that Mayor, either myself and you, and whoever you want to choose, meet with maybe some county commission representatives, David Thicke, whoever it may be, to sit down and talk about what we're planning in the city, fire fee to adjust, and that's what we'll be presenting to the county commission, so. I think we're to that point, I'm just waiting for orders, that's all I'm, so.
Well, you should feel pretty good about the meeting that you were.
Well, stakeholder meetings are always, you know, Steve Byers, who's the, he's the fire chief of the Jacksonville Fire Department, he's also in the fire commission. And he gets it, I mean, he's seen the, I don't want to say the bias, but the decrease in the availability of volunteer fire departments and what they can do and what they can provide. And it's not getting any better. Weston has seen, but we are, you know, they're responding out in the county on numerous calls, and they're handling most of the situations, especially when they go to Walbert Mill or out to Midway in that area, there's no help. So the municipality of Weston is dealing with the same thing sometimes that we deal with, so. In the same way, you know, you look at Randolph County, you know, Elkins has a first due place, and, you know, that happened in 2012, and there was a big fuss then, but 13 years later, it's just everyday business, so. So I think it's time that we sit down with our counterparts on the other end of the street and come up with some solutions, and we need to progress and move on, so.
Well, I can help you in any way, please let me know.
Sure will.
We did an analysis, I was working with Andy, and I just sent the mayor a copy of his analysis on in-town, in the city of Camden, square footage rates for commercial. And that's kind of the first round of a worksheet on that, so I can send you a copy too.
Yep, I look forward to working on it and coming up with whatever we can to move on. But like I said, with that new legislation, we have to work with the county commission, and they have to, they have to realize that they, you know.
I don't want to, I don't want to speak at midnight on it, but I do want to ask the question, in that room, in that stakeholder meeting, can you tell us if they understood the legislation they passed in? the legislation they passed in Charleston, all of them? Or were they unaware of the effects that that legislation could have by forcing?
I will say, you know, Mr. Burkhammer, and, you know, the original stakeholder meeting agreement did not pass in whole. And we made note of that because the, the original stakeholders agreed that the county commission should have the power to raise a county fire fee. So say the cities have a first due, the county commission should have the power to just say, we're raising the county fire fee from 25 to 50 dollars. It's been 20 some years. They, the legislators removed that for some reason, I can't answer that. I think that would have been the fix for continuing to support the outline fire departments. But if you do remember, and the mayor was there when we attended a meeting in Warren District, the, the county commissioners did not want any responsibility over the fire service whatsoever at that point in time. That was, at that time, it was Terry Cutright and Kerry Wallace attended that meeting at that time down Warren District. And at no point in time did the county commissioners here nor anywhere else wanted any responsibility over volunteer fire departments. So that, that makes it difficult. And the wording in, in true legislation says they should have fire protection in place, the county commission, and when you look at the county commission, it doesn't say they shall.
Well, I, I think, I'm just going to speak for myself here, but I don't know how the other councilors feel, we need a report of what that stakeholder meeting provided to help us make better decisions. You know, because we, we can't continue to just, you know, have a meeting here and a meeting there and, well, there might be another meeting next month and, and look our citizens in the eye and say we're taking, we're taking this seriously.
In common sense.
So, so I'm, I'm just asking, and I don't want it to make it from the beginning, we could be at midnight on it, but I just would like you to, for somebody to provide us a summary of what came out of that meeting or did anything.
What I was planning on doing, after that meeting, I got sick for about eight or nine days. I'm going to write Mr. Burkhammer and I was going to, all the attendees write what bullet points we went over and talked about. It was very broad. I mean, it went from, you know, staffing to funding to, to embellishment, you know, how much embellishment's in the volunteer fire service, you know, to who, response times, how do we recruit people, how do you recruit people to hire? You know, it's just, it was very broad. And, but I will tell you, the, the original stakeholder meetings that we had in Lewis County that presented the legislation that everybody agreed upon, you know, the county commissioners were in agreement in Lewis County with, with the process. There was nothing in there at that, at that point that really, there wasn't a thing that said the county commissioners had to agree to it, but you didn't have to have a written agreement. They just had to vote to say, hey, you all are not to do that. But I could write the bullet points down, email them to you all, and I'll record the meeting. You know, maybe that's something for future, we need to start going.
Well, again, you know, we have to, there's something to have to make the vote.
Sure.
If you guys have stakeholder meeting, but we don't know anything about it and, and there's a lot of discussion, then, you know, how are we going to make a decision?
Sure, sure.
And I'm going to interject here, I don't, I don't know that, that those stakeholder meetings have any bearing on, on what we decide to do. I mean, Randy, Jack, maybe a couple others have, have attended our, our, our inside county association fire meetings before, as myself has. It's similar to that. It's broad discussion. The, the, the point of it was last year was to try to soften the blow that the legislature, or to soften the direction the legislature was trying to take it during special sessions last, before the beginning of this year and going into the, to the general session at the state capitol this year, or in 2025. So now that they have created legislation, some of what was discussed was taken, some wasn't. Now that they've created the legislation, it, these, I don't know that there needs to be another stakeholder meeting. That to me was just simple, was just kind of like a, here it is, just to bring it back home, because we have the legislation, it's, it's been signed by the governor, it takes effect this, in, in, next month. We have to play by those rules. So I don't know that, that these meetings have any real bearing on the, on the decision that we have to make.
I think most, most discussion on the, those stakeholder meetings had nothing to do with the first due fire fee and more about how can we assist in fixing the volunteer fire service. That was more about what the stakeholder meeting was.
I commend you if you can, if you can find the magic answer to increasing volunteerism across the country, that'd be great.
I wouldn't be standing here. I, I got one other thing. If you remember back in December of 2024, Connie Davis, which is Captain Lynn Davis of our volunteer fire department, mom donated $4,000 to have an additional leadership, John Maxwell Leadership Academy class. And at that point in time, when she agreed to provide that money and we were setting the class up, there was 20 people, there were 20 slots that we could put people in. And at that point, Ethan back here was coming into the game of being a, you know, an administrator and supervisor, and I thought, what a great opportunity to, to put not just first responders in this, but, you know, the mayor of Elkins took this class, he attended it, there was some other business aspect people in, not just fire police and EMS. So we see other routes of how people lead their, their people. You know, and as you go through that class, you under, you really learn the why. Why are we here? What's our mission? And how do we complete the mission? How do we treat our people? You know, how, how do you motivate people? How do you get them to do the work? And that's what this class was all about. And I thought it would be, you know, really great if Ethan took that class. Well, he attended that class and completed it, and I'm here tonight to provide him a certificate of completion to that class. Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you for attending. I hope you got quite a bit out of it.
As for another class, I recommend to anybody.
It's really, it's really a great class. It's all about communication and, you know, learning the why and.
Once you guys step over and I'll get a photo. Do you guys want a photo?
Sure.
Sure. Take a photo, come around here. David.
One, two, three.
I'll have you all look over here.
Anyone who want to get a picture, but.
Oh. I'll be macro, taking a picture of me. All right, ready? There we go. Now I'll take a picture of this too.
Thank you. Great class, if anybody gets a chance and you're in, you're in leadership role and you get an opportunity to take a John Maxwell class, I recommend it. Questions?
Did you get anything about the volunteer type meeting though? Civil service.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we're, we're currently, if you hadn't noticed, we put out the, we do currently have one opening. So we are testing to create a list, and if the first due goes through that, we may have more openings after that. So we're creating a list of eligible for that, but we do have one immediate opening that we will be filling as soon as we get there.
Do you have anybody eligible on the list?
So we only got a list of two. State code requires a list of three. So we, we had a list of seven or eight at one point in time and through hiring, and then people got jobs elsewhere and they've removed their names off the list, so that's how that works. So just currently, you have the list of field positions. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, JB.
Thank you. Thank you. I did notice today, the social media posting is, is doing quite well out there that was created at the fire department. Several, a lot of, over, over 200 shares, I think, last I saw, that, that's a good thing. Okay, we're going to go down, past old business and past Paul O'Neill's report to new business, because his report is basically wrapped up in ordinance 473. So Mr. O'Neill, I will refer to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council has approved ordinance number 473 of the city of Buchanan. An ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 244 of the city of Buchanan by rezoning certain properties from R1 single-family residential district to C2 highway commercial district is the first of three readings. The, the ordinance rezones seven parcels. They are generally, they're in the vicinity of advanced auto parks down on South Canaw Street. They are on, they front on South Canaw, Putnam Street and Morning Drive. I can't speak to the genesis of this request, who, who requested, but it was approved by the planning commission and is now in ordinance form before the council, before its vote.
I think we've had a lot of discussions on it. Yeah, Ben Smith and the mayor and Jay and so forth did their due diligence beforehand.
This, this process has before gotten controversial, but this time seems to be pretty smooth. Just like last time and this time, we are following the exact same process. This was introduced at the city council level, where Ben Smith was present to talk about it. We, as a council, referred it to the planning commission, the planning commission discussed it and referred it back to the city council in an affirmative that they believe that that was something that we should consider. And so now we are here on first reading, ordinance 473. All of the property owners that are in the vicinity, vicinity of this have been notified. This will go through three readings with a public hearing scheduled on the third and final reading date. So on, on the first reading, I entertain a motion that we approve ordinance 473.
So move. A second.
Motion, Randy, second by Scott. Any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, anything else?
That is all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And specialty, Mr. Mayor, would it, would it bother you terribly if this was on the agenda for second reading during that special meeting next week?
No, that's fine.
Just to move this along?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. And we are sending that forth with no additions, corrections, modifications, it is going on as is.
Right, there was no amendment, no amendment suggested needed for this ordinance.
Correct. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will get that on the agenda next week. All right, second is, I'd like to ask if you would consider changing the city council meeting from June 19th to June 17th. I cannot be in town and I cannot be at that meeting period. I've got a meeting out of town and I'd like to be with you for our next city council meeting, which will be the last one before we enter into our new fiscal year. Would you oblige moving it from Thursday to Tuesday, the 17th?
It's amazing.
Time to make. They have a motion.
Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for the question, moving the meeting from June 19th to June 17th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that motion carries. Last, on the new business, is to accept a resignation from Alisa Lively on the Colonial Arts Center Board, of which she has been the chairwoman of that board. So we will need to put our heads together to find a new member of the Colonial Arts Center Board, and hopefully, if we can get that together, we can have that on our agenda for the June 17th meeting, giving folks enough time to, to, to maul that over of whom we asked. So first things first, then we need to accept the resignation of Alisa Lively.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Randy, is that Dave Thomas is the second?
Joe, Jack Rager.
Jack Rager, okay, my apologies. Jack Rager is the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that motion carries. We are now the council comments and announcements, and we will begin with Scott.
Did you ask? Okay. Just big thanks on our summer activities, the barbecue bash and strawberry festival. I, I really love that we're gaining things like this to get people in town to stay and to spend. Festival Friday is coming up and very excited to spend those Fridays with my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Pam?
I was just going to remind everybody, Festival Friday starts tomorrow. Love the new stage down there, and I'm sure the people will really appreciate that. And also love those new swings down there and Tolba, and I think everyone would be very interested in that.
Thanks, Pam, I agree. Uh, Dave Thomas, I'm sorry, uh, Jack, sorry, all right, Jack?
I'm flexing her, Jack.
Boy, Jack, I don't know.
I don't know if you want to come back or not, Mayor.
I'm going to take his, I'm going to take his birthday card and add the hallmark. I don't have anything else.
Well, Jack, we can, we can just exchange birthday cards, because I think we know when each other's birthday is, so.
I think we do. What is that? Robbie?
We are June 16th babies, both of us.
Are you going to bring a cake? June the 17th to celebrate?
If you buy it, yes.
I'll buy you some doughnuts.
Okay, all right, Dave Thomas, you're up next.
Well, I appreciate everybody at the scene, and especially J A's report and Shane and Jerry Light starting the barbecue bash next week. I hope everybody enjoys it and is entertained, and Festival Friday starts tomorrow, as Pam said. And y'all have a wonderful weekend and God bless y'all.
Thanks, Thomas. Rob?
I'm just excited to have the barbecue bash, sounds like there's a lot of good features to it this year, and the Festival Fridays is starting, a lot to look forward to. I too noticed the, the stop signs, and they're fantastic, I saw them from way down, blocks away, intersections away. And I noticed since we had decided to purchase those, that I've seen some other lit up signs, stop signs in other areas, and they're very dim, and I was a little concerned. The lights, and they're definitely eye catching, we definitely noticed that, and you even might look to put them elsewhere if we need to, when there's other intersections. That's impressive. That's it.
Thanks, Rob.
Randy, you, you don't have much.
Yeah, there you go. You can take a break for a second and I'll do this report of advanced correspondence and information. The agenda for the Fire Civil Service Commission testing rank lieutenant on July 8, 2025 has been sent out. We have the, we've also published the mayor's proclamation, 2025 National Nurses and Hospital Week, the mayor's proclamation, 2025 Friendly Way Firefighter Recognition, honored with Jim Gregory and Brian Holland, mayor's proclamation, 2025 Web Grub Police Officer Recognition Day, honoring Chief Virgil Miller. Also, we have sent out the copy of the mayor's Memorial Day Remarks, 2025. In our packet, there's an April 2025 Report of Cat Dog Activity from the Uptown County Commission. City of Buchanan Public Hearing Notice, July 3, 2025, 7 p.m. Will be ordinance number 473 rezoning for a third and final reading. We want to make sure folks know they have that opportunity to be here and be heard if they have any concerns or just in support of. Also, the Charles Gibson Library Director's Report for April 2025 is part of your packet. FOIA request for smart purifier for purchasing records, that's something we get from time to time. Notice from the state auditor, recent deadlines for submitting budget revisions and annual financial statements. As mentioned earlier, we're in the process of having the Colonial Arts Center web development refurbished, and that agreement is in your packet. Also reminding folks in, in the packet is copies of the COB, City of Buchanan Accepting Beds, due June 16, 2025, by 1:30 p.m. that day for on-call skill construction services, yard renovation services, and paving services. And along those lines, we are looking at a recent contract on these services, which Ethan brought our attention to, and I think will be very, very helpful. Far as my other comments, I do want to thank the street department for the quick response for those stop signs installations on Camden Avenue, and getting a letter to the Department of Highways, which is something the community asked for to consider, the state possibly lowering the speed limit on Marion Street from 35 back to 25. That's out of our purview, but Ethan put together a very good letter on those that the mayor reviewed, and we all, some of those reviewed before it went out, and hopefully we can get some positive responses from that. I also issued a new release today concerning yard waste, this is the time of year, and I'll just read it, yard waste or yard. Yard waste or yard debris will be collected from the city of Buchanan residents on the following dates, June 6, 2025, June 27, 2025, July 11, 2025, July 25, 2025, and August 8, 2025, and finally, August 22, 2025. Then beginning September 1, 2025, it's collected every Friday through November 30. Provided residents must contact Buchanan City Hall to be placed on that collection list. City residents also may take their bagged yard waste, yard debris to the transfer station during the normal operating hours free of charge. And you may bring two truckloads to the transfer station per year free of charge. Everybody's mentioned Festival Fridays. Tomorrow's headliner is Red Sky Down, which is oldies and classic rock. The swings, they look, they look great. Festival Fridays is presented by Great Buchanan. The swings were installed and paid for by Create Buchanan as well as they continue their projects throughout the community. We accepted resignation of Alyssa Lively Suttle. Her new married name is Suttle. So our congratulations to Alyssa, who eloped a couple of weeks ago. And at this past meeting, Eric Kulisch was elected as the new chairperson of the Colonial Arts Center Board of Directors and the mayor alluded to the fact that we will be looking for a new member for the board of workers as well. Looking forward to the barbecue bash. It's going to be a great time in Buchanan. So let's just hope that the weather gods are in our favor for all of these activities. That's it, Mayor.
Sir, well, I will hold you up any longer. I echo what most have already said and I hope everybody has a great weekend. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight, but I'll see you next week where I'm sure I'll have a nice, long, big pile of work waiting for me. So Randy, good job keeping, keeping the city in order this week.
Well, it's been easy.
He's been gone. What do you expect?
If no one else has anything they'd like to bring before the council this evening, I entertain a motion that at 8:32 we adjourn.
The loads on his, the loads.
Second.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Take care.